It is five thirty. I have the hall to order, the West Fargo Planning Zoning Meeting for A. Second item is the approval of the Order of the Agenda. One thing to note, we're adding in a discussion portion at the end, which is as described, discussion only, no voting on that topic, just to keep us informed on new things coming up. And today, we're going to cover the growth area master plan topic a bit. So.
I think the order looks fantastic. I'll approve.
Okay.
Move and second to approve the order? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The order is approved. Approval of the minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I read the minutes, but they looked great. I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Move and second to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. It's approved. Okay. Item D, regular agenda. So first topic is public hearing, A twenty-three dash twenty-six. Weary Residence subdivision, a request for a subdivision and conditional use permit for non-farm, single-family dwelling in an agricultural district at twelve fifteen Ninth Street Northwest, parcel's northwest quarter, southeast quarter of section thirty-one, township one forty north, range forty-nine North Reed Township, Cass County, North Dakota, Saint.
Thank you. This property is in the extraterritorial area east of the West Fargo Airport. The applicant intends to construct a new single-family dwelling on proposed lot one as reflected on the preliminary site plan. There are two existing single-family structures on proposed lot two. The structure to the north is occupied by a relative. The structure to the south is an older farmhouse, which is in disrepair, which the applicant had originally intended to remodel, however, is now proposing to demolish pending approval of the plat and the conditional use permit. The property is within a special flood hazard area as well as adjacent to a floodway along the eastern edge of the property. The new building would be required to meet all applicable federal and state regulations. There are no available city services to the lot, and it is accessed through a private drive, which will be required to be reviewed prior to final consideration. Being there is currently no legal access today, the applicant has obtained a real estate attorney who is working on easement paperwork and has spoken with adjacent property owners who are in agreement with signing the easement document once it's finalized. In terms of criteria for granting a conditional use permit, with reference to the, in ingress and egress to the property, the proposed structures therein, particularly in reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience and traffic flow, access to the property would be limited and possibly problematic at time of spring flooding and has been historically an issue. Cass County and West Fargo Engineering have both commented regarding the potential for flooding in the area. The applicant is aware of these issues. There are also questions regarding the private drive. Legal access to the property is noted in my discussion previously. Currently, there's no legal access, however, again, the applicant has obtained an attorney and is in the process of creating an access easement document. Staff would not support approval of the conditional use permit until the access is finalized. As far as general compatibility with adjacent properties and other properties in the district, as surrounding areas urbanize in the future, there may be large special assessments levied against these properties because they're larger lots. The applicant is aware of this issue. Property owners within three hundred and fifty feet, applicable agencies and departments, including Reed Township officials, Cass County Planning, and the Cass County Sanitarium were notified. As mentioned before, the Cass County engineer commented on the potential for flooding until the FM diversion is complete. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. Number one, proof of establishment of illegal access to the property in a form approved by the city attorney, city planner, prior to review and approval by the city commission. Number two, acknowledgement and/or waiver of right to protest future special assessments. Number three, with the applicant intending to demolish the older farmhouse on proposed lot two, one dwelling per lot would be appropriate for the development. Number four, assigned conditional use permit agreement is received. This is a public hearing. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up for public comment or input at this time.
Hey, you know. That means Chris.
Come on up.
Yeah. I purchased.
You are propose, I assumed, the question?
Correct. Yep.
Chris.
Weary. Yep. So we bought the, I'll call it the east lot where the existing home is in the shop in the old farmhouse here about a year and a half ago. That's when we engaged with West Fargo City Planning and Zoning. Originally, we were going to add on to the house that is on the north side there. As we were planning on doing that, I've got kids that are in high school. This is a two-bedroom home. It didn't fit for us. My kids weren't willing to share a room when they're a junior and senior in high school, and my in-laws moved into this home. They're in their seventies. After spending a year out there, they decided they liked it a little bit too much. So we decided to leave them there. That's when we started pursuing, adding on to the existing farmhouse that was built in the nineteen thirties. That house doesn't have any electrical, any plumbing. It's inhabited by squirrels and mice and whatever else is in there. We came to purchase the other lot on the west side here this summer, and that's when we started looking at building a new structure on that side. After spending a year and a half studying these ordinances and the agricultural zone and what's going on out there, we kind of came up with that was the best solution, not being so close to the river with dealing with setbacks and geotechnical reports and whatnot, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have any additional questions for me as far as what we got going on out there?
Well, I guess I, you sound like you've done some understanding of being longer with flood conditions, setbacks, technicals. You know what you're doing yourself.
I know what I'm getting myself into out there, yeah. We've been through two, I mean, fairly significant flood events the last couple of years. The dykes that are built out there were built by the former residents out there, and they've held up for thirty-some years. So we know we've got to go to the west and go by the airport to get out there when it's at that time. You know, the city guys do a great job of plugging the culverts there on Nineteenth Avenue to protect the airport, and we don't get backflow that way either. So I'm pretty prepared to deal with any situation.
Additionally, you understand the potential impact of condition number two, the acknowledgement and waiver of the right to protest future special assessments?
I do. I know what's coming out there. It's such a nice area, I can see why everyone wants to develop. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seen, any other comments, public? Close that section. Commissioners, questions?
I think you've mentioned this, this has been about for staff or county. Much feedback, comments for the city engineers?
Just the potential for flooding. Jerry, do you have anything to add, or?
Well, the only thing I would add is that the most significant challenge that's probably going to be coming for this area, sorry.
Commissioners, the only thing I would add that'll likely be the most significant challenge coming for this area is this is a future growth area, and so as, you know, the area develops over the next twenty years, there's going to be significant, you know, regional improvements made, you know, lift stations, streets, those types of things, and, you know, large lots like these, being that this lot is platted and it's not, you know, a ten-acre parcel, you know, he's equipping himself to weather the storm better. But, you know, we have had in recent years horror stories, quite honestly, from lots to the south as the city infilled around them, and we just, you know, have tried our best to make sure that the applicant is aware of what's coming. But, you know, yeah, there could be significant specials in the future. You know, policies always are potentially subject to change and whatnot, and, you know, that's kind of where it sits for now, though.
I might be off track here a little bit, but.
Just thinking about these situations, if we have a, I'm not applying this to this gentleman here in particular, but if we end up with a lot like this that has a really heavy burden of specials because of how the policy applies to the situation, and if this property owner signs this, basically waives their rights to appeal those decisions, what role does the city play down the road in sort of handling that burden, if any?
I guess generally speaking, you know, as these items, infrastructure items get, you know, constructed, you know, the city historically has a policy that it's used that, you know, assigns benefit. You know, all that is run through the, you know, Special Assessment Commission, the City Commission, you know, so there is an effort to, you know, apply everything evenly, fairly, you know, but, you know, it's also kind of, you know, those bodies can make up their minds, should they choose so, to, you know, take action either way, I guess, if that's a good way to describe it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
No, thank you.
Maybe just another question for Erin or Lisa. You know, in our discussion agenda later on, we're going to be talking about growth area master plan. The current comp plan doesn't have a zoning component to it. Presumably, the growth area master plan will have a zoning component to it. Until that's done, I guess we don't necessarily have all the guardrails to apply. Is that basically where we're at?
Yeah, I could respond to that one. So, you know, you are correct. Within the West Fargo two point oh comprehensive plan, you know, it does not include any sort of detailed land use component or anything like that that would kind of point us in any specific direction in terms of zoning or regulatory controls. It does point us, you know, have some general guiding principles and different things. I will say, you know, this one staff struggled with, and I think the applicant can attest to, you know, some of that as he indicated. This has probably been about a years-long conversation on and off to try and figure out a workable solution here. Ultimately, though, you know, there are, generally speaking, the comp plan seeks to preserve our extraterritorial area for urban-type development. However, we do have ordinances on the books today, including our agricultural zoning district that does allow for non-farm residence, residential uses as a conditional use. So that is an option on the books today. The purpose of the conditional use permit is that it is acceptable in certain situations. And so, in looking at the context here, you know, staff feels that this is one of those situations where, you know, it kind of makes sense in this scenario, given the one kind of entrance in and out of there. It's not an area that's going to obstruct the extension of future utilities or rights of way or anything like that that's going to, you know, create a barrier for future growth, for example. And so it's kind of at a, kind of a dead spot, if you will, in terms of being surrounded by the airport to the west and then the Cheyenne diversion and Cheyenne River to the south and east there, for example. So the likelihood of this area, you know, densifying to, you know, to a high level is, you know, unlikely until we can get some of those, you know, barrier, some of those barriers addressed, I guess, in terms of crossing those barriers. So those are some of the, you know, some of the thought process anyway that went into staff's analysis in this particular application. The other thing that is noted in the staff report there that Lisa presented, they, there is, you know, an existing house that they're planning to demolish, is my understanding. So it's kind of a one-for-one swap, if you will, of a house in this case.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions as outlined.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the four recommended conditions. Any further discussion required before vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Good luck. May the spring thaw be slow. Item number, lost my agenda.
Two, D two.
Two. There we go. Item number two, public hearing, A twenty-three dash twenty-seven, Oak Ridge nineteenth edition, a request for major subdivision replot of lots thirty-one through thirty-three, block one, Oak Ridge eighteenth edition, Cass County, North Dakota, McGill Frey.
Rivas.
Rivas.
Yep. Good evening, commissioners. This application is before you, entitled Oak Ridge nineteenth edition. It's a replat of the block one of Oak Ridge seventeenth edition. The reason for the replat is to exchange a land designation for three lots into two. The former lot thirty-two, excuse me, lot, there was lot thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, they'll be reduced to two lots. The former central lot will be equally divided between the two future lots for the purpose of a proposed parking lot that will be shared by each adjoining business owner on lot one and lot two. The staff does recommend approval for this item. The zoning ordinance is a PUD, which is why it's before you today as a major subdivision. The applicant's representative is here for more engineering. Should you have any questions for myself or the applicant's representative?
Thank you. This is public hearing. Open it up for public comment or input at this time. Any public comment? Say none. Close that. Commissioners?
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Yes, it does.
Nothing else for me. I move to approve with the, is there one condition? No? Yeah, with one recommendation.
Yes. One.
Yes. It's just a recommendation, no conditions. Move to approve.
It has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Any further discussion before vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Approved. Hopefully, this is the last change in that area. Gone through quite a few iterations back there. I think that's the last chunk left over. I mean, that's the last building spot, right? I just walked past there, going over to Brutus. All right. Item E, are there any non-agenda items or topics we wish to add? None. F, discussion. Erin.
All right, thank you. So maybe just to start with, I think I noted this on the non-agenda items last month, but we're going to be kind of trying something new with the agenda, as was announced earlier this evening. We've had some off and on, I think, discussion in, it might have been a year ago by now, in terms of just having some opportunity for general discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, talking with the chair and vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is kind of the attempt at that, I guess, for lack of a better term here. The intention here is to add a non-agenda, or excuse me, a discussion agenda portion to the overall regular agenda. The intention here, again, is to have some informal discussion. This is intended to be kind of separate from the regular agenda. No action will be taken during this time. It's really just to carve out some time for less formal type, open-ended type discussion. The intention of staff would be, on months that we don't have a very long regular agenda, would be months that we would look to add a potential discussion topic. Certainly, we'd be open to any, you know, topics of discussion that the Planning and Zoning Commissioners would like to discuss in future months. You know, that'd be something I would always invite in terms of coordinating discussion topics. I think, in the short term anyway, I think you'll find a lot of the discussion topics that staff is looking to bring forward come straight out of the West Fargo Planning Needs Action Plan that was completed not too long ago. So we do have a few different topics kind of in the hopper, if you will, to bring forward in incoming months. However, as, if we do ever have a month where we have a lot of action items and we anticipate it would be a longer meeting, those are months that we might hold off on bringing forward a discussion topic, for example. So we're going to kind of be flexible with it.
More nights when there's a big baseball game on.
We can try and schedule around those, too, if you'd like. So, yeah, apologies to any Twins fans here. So that's kind of the overall intent. There's really, and again, we're kind of open to you guys' thoughts. If this is working, if it's not working, if we need to adjust, this is going to be kind of a little bit of a trial and error thing, but just a kind of first step at carving out some time for discussion. So with that overview, today's topic that we wanted to have with you, or just kind of open up discussion on, is the growth area master plan. This, again, was identified as part of the recent Planning Needs Assessment that was undertaken over the past year or so. This was identified as a midterm project. However, it is a project that I think we heard a lot of feedback on that was kind of of top importance, even if it's not, you know, so immediate. The timeline of the FM diversion really, I think, you know, dictates the urgency of this, of this effort and the fact that we had, you know, a few years until that, the FM diversion project is complete, is why it landed in the midterm projects basket, if you will. Additionally, there's just, there is a lot of lead time for an effort like this in terms of having some discussions like these. You know, this is really a first step to a lot more discussion to come. And so there's a lot of, a lot of discussion and, you know, some decision and direction setting that needs to take place prior to the actual undertaking of something like a growth area master plan. And so the intention tonight is really to start that conversation. We have had some discussions between the various departments, you know, primarily at the staff level at this point, but we wanted to kind of broaden the discussion and start with the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to get some direction and some inputs and some kind of guidance early on in the process that will kind of shape, help to shape and steer the conversation moving forward. So, you know, with that, I'd like to kind of open it up for some general discussion. I do have a couple of canned questions that I can pose to you guys to kick things off, but before I do, I do want to just open it up to see if there's any kind of questions, any kind of major things that, you know, any of you want to make sure that we kind of cover tonight, and I'll kind of leave it there.
Well, one of the things that, the first thing that comes up for me is, all right, what is the scope of a growth area master plan? I mean, what are we talking here? Are we, is it like the West Fargo two point oh program where we have a pretty intensive outside support required to pull that all together? You know, and secondary question is that, all right, who kind of, who's the champion of that? Is that the City Commission? Or is that the Planning and Zoning?
Yep. And maybe just in quick response to that, I think all options are on the table right now. You know, we're early, very early in this process, and so there's no, you know, definitive box that this has to fit in. And so that's really what we want to focus, you know, tonight's discussion on is, you know, what are those rough edges, if you will? What is the general scope that we want to look at? You know, what are the top priorities, if you will, in order to start to frame up that discussion? Ultimately, you know, the planning, just, you know, conceptually, in general, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body to the City Commission on all, you know, development-type activities. And so to your question about, you know, championing an effort like this, I would imagine it would be, you know, a joint, you know, at the staff level, a joint effort, you know, primarily the planning department would be kind of the lead department potentially, but I would anticipate there would be some kind of multi-departmental aspects to this. There are a lot of interrelated pieces to this, and so it would not just be the planning, you know, department staff alone. And then at the leadership level, it would be the Planning and Zoning Commission providing some recommendation and guidance to the City Commission, but ultimately, the City Commission kind of making the final call, if you will. Just how I see it right now, today, but. And then I would just really quickly, sorry, I would add, I do have a handout. Staff has kind of put thoughts down on paper, but before I hand that out to you guys, I don't want to kind of taint your responses here, so I won't, I'll hand that out in a little bit, if that's okay. And then you can take it with you.
Erin, maybe into the little bit lower level of detail question. What, when you say growth area, are you thinking that we know the exact growth area, or is that an outcome of the master plan?
Yeah, that's kind of the secondary question I had, too. Is there already a geographical scope defined?
And I guess, you know, just maybe to drill on that a little bit further, you know, we've got very limited areas south, potential good areas north if the, you know, when the diversion's, the metro diversion's completed.
And the swamp is trained.
And then there's areas between the two diversion channels, and then there's areas outside of the metro diversion channel. And how much of that is sort of on the table for discussion?
Yeah, and I'd say, right now, all of it. We'll hand out one thing to you quickly here, if you wouldn't mind us.
If we're derailing your planned presentation, just let us know.
No, this is a discussion, not a presentation. Come on.
Thanks, Lisa. So I do have two handouts. One of them is the one that's being handed out by Lisa right now. This is just an excerpt from the West Fargo two point oh comprehensive plan, and so.
Thank you.
This is the section of the plan that contains the preferred development and growth map. So in lieu of, you know, a traditional future land use map, you know, this is the map that we have in our comp plan that identifies, it's more focused on, you know, development typologies, if you will, in terms of identifying some of those, you know, those nodes, if you will, those walkable mixed-use higher-density nodes surrounded by more traditional, you know, what you might call sort of urban-type development. And so I would, in answer to your question of geographic boundary, I would start with this, this image here, and, you know, you can note that the FM diversion alignment is noted on the map, and the red line there is the city's extraterritorial boundaries. The exclusive boundary is the first ring boundary, and then the joint jurisdictional boundary is the second ring boundary there. And so I think, you know, in talking with staff, it's primarily probably focused on the area in yellow, the extraterritorial area within the boundaries of the FM diversion is primarily what staff's discussion has been focused on. However, you know, I will keep going back to this, you know, it is open-ended at this time, and so if there is a desire to, or a, you know, identified need to, you know, focus attention elsewhere, you know, do we need to be focusing within the city limits, for example? Are there areas of the city that we want to be proactively, you know, planning for? Or do we feel that that's adequately covered with the, you know, infrastructure that we have? And, you know, there's kind of different lenses we might need to look at when we're looking at infill-type development versus outward-type development.
Yeah, I guess I, I could see the I ninety-four corridor between West Fargo and Mapleton being a, an interest area for developers. And so I, it's, while it's outside of. And so it's, while it's outside of the metro diversion channel, I still wonder if that shouldn't be looked at as kind of a corridor.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the metro diversion channel's gonna have a handful of crossings, highway crossings across the channel, and it seems like, obviously utilities are complicated, but it seems like those locations where there's a crossing over it could be an obvious area where there's maybe a little bit of additional.
That's gonna be out here.
Well, all along the channel, really. Yeah, along 94, and then, you know, a few crossings all along, 32nd, 52nd.
I will.
Because those crossings are probably four miles apart, roughly, it's not gonna be real conducive to develop anything on the west side until those nodes around each crossing get filled up. And I guess the debate is whether that is even, you know, beyond the planning horizon of this, or if that's so far out there and everything inside becomes the focal item. I don't know.
What's the timing for this whole thing to be done?
Supposed to be operational in the spring of '27, or flood-ready.
That means all the berms, everything, all the way up, this whole thing there. Interesting.
Which isn't that far away, really.
Eric, is that when they expect the FEMA certification, or is that another year or so beyond that?
I'm guessing the FEMA certification is probably 2030.
Okay, 'cause that's gonna inhibit growth until that's done, otherwise you still have to build them up and everything else, so.
Right.
And the insurance aspect.
Yeah, yeah.
As the, as the Army Corps of Engineers would redefine floodplain areas or whatever?
FEMA does that.
FEMA does that.
FEMA does that.
Aaron, it's like, go big or go home. That's what he's thinking.
Well, I don't know. I just was thinking, you know, maybe thinking out loud a little bit that perhaps there's a, you know, as you think about a growth plan, is there a, you know, kind of a 10-year, a 20-year, and a 50-year horizon?
Because those boundaries are different for each one of those horizons, yeah?
And I could see, you know, it's all a bit of a crystal ball exercise, but at some point beyond, probably between 20 and 50 years, we're gonna fill up everything inside.
Really? There's still a lot to open.
Well, I mean, unless there's a huge focus on redevelopment, but I think at some point, looking outside of that channel becomes an opportunity for West Fargo.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jerry Wallace, Assistant City Engineer. One thing I'd just like to comment to is, you know, the engineering department is looking long-range, along with Public Works, our consultant engineers on how to service a lot of these extraterritorial areas. You know, as far as utilities go, and I guess in a perfect world, you know, what's being kind of discussed right now would ideally be, you know, seeing major utility infrastructure able to support this area up here, and then extending that west and south through the entire corridor. Obviously, nobody operates in a vacuum, and it's not a perfect world. There's, you know, other avenues that we're currently also exploring as to, you know, how to say potentially service the area south, the interstate yet, that, you know, to the layman, looks like it's primed, you know, for easy growth potential, but, you know, we're currently exploring some of the challenges with doing that. The one thing I would say as floodplain administrator too, though, is just, I think the nature of the development community, with a lot of that still being out in the floodplain there, I think the development community's probably just gonna find the stuff inside more turnkey, and that will probably be where they focus their areas, even though there is, you know, value to that interstate exposure. I just, kind of, my gut tells me that's probably how it's gonna play out, but just wanted to make that comment.
And thanks, Jerry. And I think I would agree with that, but there's also a, I guess, a caveat there that right now, the developers seem to be very, very focused on Horus because it's largely out of the floodplain, it's developable, there's schools nearby.
Absolutely.
And that's where the demand is growing, and that's gonna fill up in a few years.
Yep.
And maybe it's five years, I don't know, but at some point, I mean, I think the developers are gonna have hard questions about, well, there's, the easy stuff is gone.
Right.
And they're gonna have to scratch their heads about where, and, you know, again, unless we just double down and do everything redevelopment, which is probably a great idea, whether or not the development community buys into that, I don't know.
Right. Yep, just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
I'm ready for these tough questions Aaron was gonna ask.
All right, fire away.
Yep. So here's a conversation starter. What future growth-related questions or issues do you feel we are currently ill-equipped to handle?
We just talked about one earlier tonight with the.
The costs.
Mr. Weary.
And the spreading of that for the infrastructure necessary.
Yeah.
The dreaded specials, and how to, you know, obviously manage them, but then also, how do you, as early as possible, communicate them so people can understand what the impact is gonna be prior to investment, prior to, you know, development work and all that sort of thing? Because I think, sitting here, the times we have the biggest, the topic which we have the biggest emotional pushback, and it's not just emotional, it's just, is when it comes down to the costs and sharing that. I'll tell you, as a West Fargo person that is in an area that the Cheyenne diversion has protected, that now I'm paying for this diversion, which I don't necessarily really benefit from, it was, it can be a sore point, and, you know, that doesn't even cover the infrastructure stuff coming later. But, you know, so that is certainly something that is a tough one to answer, because if you don't know what you're gonna build, you don't know what the, you know, have enough of a specific plan, how do you quantify that? And start to, you know, make people aware of, hey, if you got an acre out here that you want to put this house on, and I'm gonna use you as an example, you can have three acres versus other people, you know, a third, three-quarters of an acre is normal, I guess, right? Something like that. So you've got 10 times the size. Did I do the math right? No, I didn't, but whatever. Five times the size. And so it's, you know, how do you make sure that people are aware of what that is and communicate that early enough so that it's not surprise? I think that's probably the area that we are least prepared. And then secondary for me would be, why this plan? Why are you explaining why, you know, our strategy in West Fargo is, you know, mixed housing developments, not huge swaths of single-family-only communities or apartment-only communities? We try to have this approach of lended. Well, that also is a challenge, and then, again, communicating it as things develop, because it's never in stone. They'll have guidelines, like, in general, it's R2 or R3 here, and it's kind of gonna be R1 here, and then something changes. My personal example is, the land behind my house went from R1, R2, to UD, right? 'Cause it was so weird. Remember? And so it's like, okay, and managing through that development of the specific plan and those changes is where it's gonna be the hardest.
Yeah, I think laying out a, sort of a game plan for different zoning types, which is, I don't know, a traditional way of doing it, and maybe there's newer techniques now to.
Yeah. I mean, think about it. If we start doing as specific of a plan and we lay down some, all right, this is in general gonna be R1, or this is in general, we have now affected the value of the land of each and every single chunk. Okay? Why are you making mine less valuable? Or, you know, making an industrial park is a fraction of the value you can get out of residential, I think. I don't know exactly, but when we were dealing with that Sand Hills, is that the area? The cost per square foot is way less than what, you know, a developer could have if it was residential.
I think this is also, and I don't have the solution, but this is also an opportunity for the city to explore something other than just special assessments. Maybe it's a combination, but we're unique, kind of.
You touched that third rail?
Yeah, we're unique in this area of the country that we use specials to pay for a lot of infrastructure. I mean, other areas do it, but this area is very heavy in it. Maybe it's an opportunity to look at, 'cause we're getting ahead of the game. Part of the problem as a city, we've been chasing development, and we've got some great developers that did a great job, and they built a wonderful city, but we're, kind of, they were driving the bus, and the city was trying to react to that, and getting roads in, and getting the infrastructure, and now it's finally gotten to a pace where we're able to, you know, at least co-drive the bus instead of riding passenger and trying to solve the challenges that came along with that rapid growth. And down south, we had a lot of houses built before we had a lot of arterial roads ever put in. And then we end up widening and widening, and, you know, there's some roads that, like, down here in Veterans or Ninth Street, that should be widened probably again. But at any rate, I'm just saying, it's an opportunity, I think, for the staff. You got a little bit of a lull, and what will be development here is to explore options, 'cause I think like these guys have pointed out, that's always one of the things that's just hurt people are special assessments, and I.
I like your thinking, how do we have to keep that same sort of structure?
I don't know. You know, in other.
Paying for it, because it's like, in other communities, when you buy a piece of land, you're paying for the infrastructure up to the curb, right? So it's the street, the sewer, the electric coming in, that's a part of the cost of that lot.
Right.
Versus.
And the developers, more, if not all, he's a good share of that, but that also allows them to perhaps build a little larger developments, you know, and get all their infrastructure in, and then develop instead of, we're gonna do a little piece here, and we're gonna do a little piece here, and pretty soon the city is having to deal with all those little pieces that end up to add up a lot of traffic and everything else. But I'm just saying, it's a good opportunity, if we're gonna have five, six, seven years of, let's call it a lull, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be dead, but it's a lull, we can tell by our agendas, you know, it's a lull. It's a good opportunity to explore those options, because that does give, that does give the citizens heartburn, especially some of us, people that live in the existing parts of town, and then we're funding these things, you know? And even though we want to fund things to progress the city, it's, and all that, it's still, a lot of people ask, well, what's in it for me?
And it was kind of the other side of the question, is this an annexation sort of thing, where it's like, okay, now this extraterrestrial thing is part of West Fargo, so we're gonna be making these changes, and, you know, that, isn't that a whole separate process?
Yep. The annexation process is a defined process, however, kind of an annexation strategy could be part of an overall, you know, development strategy, so it's.
Wouldn't it have to be a piece of the overall growth plan? Sort, 'cause it's like, well, we're going to basically say, define the shape of this whole area, has to be kind of in our jurisdiction of that kind of thing, right?
Yeah, I think, I think in one way or another, you know, annexation would be part of, part of the discussion, I would think. You know, the actual, the city does have subdivision and zoning jurisdiction within extraterritorial area, and so it's really just.
Do we have that control, kind of?
Yeah, the city has a certain level of development control outside of the jurisdictional city limits. It's really the extension of, you know, utilities and services and things like that.
Everything in green on this map, we have already.
So the green area.
Green and yellow.
Yeah, green and yellow are.
Inside the red lines.
Yep.
You know, I think too, you know, we really need to have organs in this area, because not everybody wants a single family with a big lot, because eventually, you know, the kids go away and you're stuck with a house you can't sell, and, you know, as population ages, as well as young families wanting to move to West Fargo, can't afford these expensive houses with big lots. And we just have no inventory at all in that middle housing area, and it's a topic that is really coming up all over the country. And, you know, when I saw the stats at a recent presentation, it's gonna get here, I mean, it's here, but it's moving real quickly, as a lot of people move to the eastern part of the state, because they can't support the small towns in part, and they're, we just don't have any inventory like that. So some considerations for zoning for some of the smaller lots, and it also minimizes the specials.
How do you even kick this whole thing off? How do you kick the, all right, let's put pen to paper.
Part of what you just talked about, when I was on the commission, it's been like three, four years ago, was the redevelopment downtime, what they call redevelopment, let's call it renewal. You know, in that first, second, third avenue corridor with their old houses, and, 'cause engineering has studied the infrastructure, and a lot of it's failing and all that, just even repairing the infrastructure in that area would just kill those existing homeowners, 'cause their specials were 30,000, 40,000. And there was discussion at that time, and apparently it just died, about finding solutions to that, you know, those houses haven't gotten any newer, you know, in the last few years, is to her discussion, I, there were some thoughts about different ways of putting together land use so that maybe the specials wouldn't kill the homeowners and stuff like that, but I think it all died, but I think it's a good point, is we have not really addressed the older area of our town, I think, like we should have, and I know we're trying to talk about the growth, but that's part of our growth, I think, too, is to repurpose that area without driving everyone else that lives there out of there now, or making the costs so prohibitive that they can't afford to continue to live there. So it's a challenge, maybe, you know, we can go out and buy Powerball tickets and win all that money and throw into that area or something, that would make it happen, but it is a real challenge, 'cause they do need some assistance there in that area. Now, one last comment, we're talking, the growth areas too, is one thing I'd be real cautious of, and that's happened in our history, is again, the hopscotch developments, is someone's gonna come in and say, I want to build 20 houses, but I want to build a way up by Dave Gust's house. And like you say, is how do you provide services to that? How do you provide streets and all that stuff? And then how does that affect your overall planning for traffic flow or water systems or, you know, whatever? So, and that's a challenge, 'cause someone comes in and they say, I want to build a 100-unit development or something, that's pretty attractive to a city. You say, oh, wow, that's, that's great, but it comes with a lot of challenges, too. And there will be, people will do that, and, well, it's nothing new, but. And there will be, people will do that, and, well, it's nothing new, but.
And then, like you said before, do it in a way so you're not redoing roads.
Right.
Five years after you build it.
And I think part of the problem on specials, it's probably what's irritating to people, okay, I got, I got hit with my whatever thirty thousand bucks. But then three years they come back and, well, here's another five or ten, cause we gotta build regional water retention. Well, here's another ten thousand dollar assessment, because, well, they gotta add one more lane on there. And I know, the tough thing is doing it all right, cause engineering can't plan for all that and all that. But that really, I think, really irritates people is when they keep getting nipped.
I think, I think if you had a growth plan, you could design the roads and the infrastructure for the twenty year, fifty year plan. But paying for it becomes really challenging when current model.
Then you're building a, say, a six lane road when you need a two lane right now for the next ten years.
Well, that's what I heard, not to pull school into it, but that school vote, that's what I heard from a lot of people that obviously probably didn't vote for it, is they said, why didn't they do it right the first time?
Right.
Probably, cause not everyone would wanna pay that much.
It's like the ribbon cutting was yesterday and we're voting to expand it tomorrow.
That's another subject, but anyway, I think that, in the ideal world, is yes, have the growth plan, have, have the plan to put all the streets in and however they're gonna go in all the water plan. But I don't know if that's necessarily doable.
Right, or at least build, or at least plan in a way so that when there is expansion of those facilities or that it's not tearing it out and redoing it, it's just adding on.
And I guess, maybe I'll ask you guys a question, when we talk about that, in my mind, we're talking about the, the major arterials, the trunk infrastructure. Once you get inside the development.
Yeah, that, I think there's a lot.
My opinion, then the development pays for development.
Right, right, it's the arterial roads, but.
Yeah, it's the sewer lines that are going to take that away to the treatment plant. It's the location of the treatment plant, right? So that it can be, you know, if it's not sized right away for the twenty year, it's size or position so that it can be expanded. Things like that.
And the other thing, I think this could be a nearer term, should be a nearer term thing, is north-south access. I, I know you're looking at Ninth Street right now over here, either a underpass or whatever you're gonna do. But Center and whatever that is, Eighth Street Northwest or whatever, the Stockyards, one of these days, those are gonna just collapse, they're, they're in such rough shape, those railroad bridges.
Railroad, yep.
And they're, they're skinny, you don't get anything wide through there. But if we don't have a north-south access that connect, keeps the city connected, we're, we're end up more or less having a new city outside that way. Cause all the traffic, all the activity will go away from the city. So I think that's, to me, that's gotta be a nearer term part of the, any growth plan and tied with traffic flow and stuff like that. Cause our north-south access is terrible right now. Can we give you more answers in your head?
No, this is great. Unless there's more, I can, I can certainly hand out kind of staff's initial thoughts here and walk through what, which touches on, touches on a lot of what you guys already hit on. But you guys also, you know, certainly brought some new topics to the table that we can kind of integrate into this, this document.
But Aaron, while you're doing that, I guess one other thought. If you, if you look at West Fargo and the, the river corridor. It seems like, there's probably some, some pockets, but it seems like the vast, vast majority of property abutting in the river corridor is private property. And in my opinion, I think that is great for the people that abut the river, but it's a detriment to the overall city. And I feel like the natural, I guess, river features, water features, amenities that that could provide for the broader good of, of the city. I think, I think we're missing that. And to the extent we have an opportunity to keep that in mind as we explore areas beyond the developed core, I think that would be a good thing to incorporate.
Absolutely. So, yeah, again, thank you for the thoughtful feedback and please keep it coming. This is again, only the kind of first step in a series of ongoing discussions. So in terms of what I just handed out to you, this is kind of staff's first attempt at kind of putting what we've discussed down on paper for, for purposes of trying to get some organization around this, this discussion topic. And so the intention would be to take what we heard today and kind of incorporate it into this document. This is intended to be kind of a living, growing document. But just to orient everyone with how this is kind of laid out, it starts out with just a general abstract overarching summary of what we're looking to do here. The second section is just issues, just trying to identify various issues that, that are out there that, you know, may or may not need to be answered with, along with this effort. You know, I'll, I'll start with the first one there, you know, the FM diversion channel. I will say too, we recently have had started to reach out to partner jurisdictions, including the Park District, School District and the County, just to kind of start with. Certainly, there's many other stakeholders that we'll, we'll eventually be communicating with. But, you know, the County especially, Jason Benson, the County Engineer, he's been very, very helpful in terms of some of the feedback and guidance he's had. He's obviously plays a major role in the FM diversion discussions over the years. And so just recognizing that the FM diversion, you know, it's a, it's a massive, I think, three billion dollar public investment into this area. And so, you know, there's a certain level of responsibility to, to kind of proactively protect the public investment through some of the well-reasoned, you know, land use and development policy, to make sure that we don't, you know, squander that investment, if you will. I think that's an important one to kind of start with. Some other issues that we've identified is just the lagoons, that came up as part of the planning needs assessment. That's kind of a standalone topic of discussion as well, which, you know, may or may not remain, you know, independent of this, but certainly will overlap with this effort. That too is probably another, you know, discussion item that we're gonna wanna have with you guys at some point in the near future here. Just some lack of tools in sufficiently evaluating and assessing your proposed development projects in terms of things like fiscal impacts to the city. And then long-term sustainability, you know, to your, your conversation and your thoughts on special assessments and how do we, how do we make sure that these things are viable? Not just now, but into the future when it comes to having to rehab and repair old infrastructure, for example. So I'm just, you know, we can improve some coordination between city and partner agencies. Right now, the School District is, you know, obviously looking for, looking long range in terms of some of their facility needs, including, you know, potential school locations. And so how do we kind of join with them on some of their discussions when it comes to placement of, of schools? Decisions by partner agencies, whether it be a school district, a private property owner, whoever, does have an impact. Everything is interrelated when it comes to development, whether it's a, you know, a push or a pull factor. You know, there are, you know, certain economics that go into land use decisions and, you know, it's the, decisions of the city likewise impact the decisions of other entities. And so just making sure that we're coordinated in those efforts. So I'm not gonna go through this in, in great detail, but just to kind of give you a flavor for some of the issues that we're, we're talking about here. What I wanted to primarily draw your attention to is the, the third section there, the project, or excuse me, the purpose and objectives. So generally speaking, kind of summarize these into three main categories. And so there's kind of a main bullet point and then some sub bullet points underneath each one. But just to start at the high level with the main three, one of the purposes would be to establish a strategic framework to guide decisions regarding growth and development. So kind of the umbrella term, just to recognize that, you know, we need a, we need some, some lenses, if you will, to look through when we're evaluating certain decisions, whether it be a development proposal in front of us or decisions on, you know, how to, how to structure the CIP. If we have that common framework, it'll help, help make intelligent decisions when it comes to a lot of those things. The second bullet point, to collaboratively manage growth decisions amongst dispersed stakeholder entities. And so again, recognizing that decisions of the School District, the County, the cities, you know, surrounding cities, those all impact growth patterns. And so just wanting to make sure that this, this process isn't just, you know, something that happens in isolation within City Hall. It's something that is coordinated with, with outside entities, including the public and, and landowners within these areas. And then the third bullet point there, to better understand future growth demand and also to reaffirm and refine the city's vision for its future growth area accordingly. So that just speaks to getting a better understanding of timelines, what are, you know, when do we expect to see development pressures based on the, the current conditions of today or the, you know, progression of the FM diversion project? If we can kind of get a better sense of when, when we might see some of these pressures, we can better kind of calibrate, I guess, some of the recommendations and what we need to take certain.
To that point, Aaron, are you envisioning a, you know, population and demographic forecast almost for, to help guide that piece?
I think that would inform this, I don't know that that would be a part of this. Certainly MetroCog, every five years, they do their metrowide demographic forecast study, and so I would, I would think we would be able to utilize some existing.
And you'd be able to lean on what MetroCog does that's specific enough for West Fargo?
I think so, I mean, you know, the one that was recently completed, you know, there's nothing, you know, to be honest, there's nothing super scientific about how, how they kind of, you know, where the, where the value is, is kind of the metrowide, metrowide population, that, that's pretty accurate. But when it comes to divvying up that metrowide population between all the jurisdictions, you know, it's, it can boil down to some, you know, best guesses on where the, where the easiest land is to develop and what are the, you know, impediments to, to growth in, in certain areas? What have, what are the, have the historic trends been? Which are all, you know, subject to change and subject to, to market conditions, so. But at least it gets us kind of a, again, as good of a crystal ball as we can, can hope for. So those are the, the kind of the three main umbrella, you know, categories, just for, for sake of trying to organize this.
Maybe one other question, there was a comment made about some of the downtown and potential redevelopment or renewal approaches. And, you know, this is titled growth area, just curious, are you thinking that some of the downtown renewal stuff is not part of this? Important, but not part of this, is that kind of your intention?
Yeah, so we do have the downtown master plan, which is ongoing, and that's again, another topic for future conversation. Hopefully next month, we'll, we'll be able to dive into that a little deeper. And so we do have, I think, the way that I like to think about stuff like this, I think to your question at the very beginning of this discussion, was, you know, is this a part of the growth plan two point O or comp plan two point O? Kind of the way that I generally like to think about this is it's a family of plans, you know, these plans aren't in isolation, they don't necessarily, you know, replace one another. But they are all kind of interrelated. The comprehensive plan is, is kind of the, you know, the overarching, as its name would imply, you know, sets the overarching vision and points the direction. But these, these companion plans, whether it's the downtown master plan or whether it's a growth area master plan or whether it's a transportation plan that we work on with MetroCog, you know, those should all be informed by the, the vision and direction of the comp plan. But they drill into, you know, specific topics or specific geographic areas. And so, again, with this effort, you know, we're, we're calling it the growth area master plan just for something to call it. That doesn't mean that we have to stick with that if, if we wanna, you know, change the, the geographic area that we wanna focus on, for example. Again, at this point in time, I think we're, we're kind of all ears, we're just kind of hossing something out there to, to start some discussion.
The downtown master plan state doesn't, doesn't include that area south, like, I say First Avenue South to Fourth Avenue South? What I'll call the original West Fargo area? Does it, does it get that wide out or not?
Yeah, so the downtown.
It does at the, at Cheyenne Street, because of, you know, it's abutting Cheyenne Street, but when you go farther to the east, I, I'm, I'm thinking more out to like the post office area than south. The old original West Fargo.
Yeah, so the downtown master plan is primarily focused on Cheyenne and Main, and then slowly kind of, it's, it's more and more fuzzy as you get out. So it, it does not get that wide in terms of the scope.
I, I, I don't know if it needs to be part of this, if this is a kind of a growth plan thing for the undeveloped areas, you know, pretty much undeveloped. But I think it should be on the radar, I think, of the planning, whether it's a, you know, a third thing for you guys to contemplate or study or plan for or whatever. Again, it's, it's been a discussion item, and I don't know what's happening in the city, cause I've heard nothing of it for a number of years. But that area does need some love.
Jerry had to take off, it looks like, but I know there are ongoing conversations, you know, specifically regarding the CIP in terms of the funding of the infrastructure, especially in the core areas.
Just one other comment, I, I think the collaboration's very important, cause unfortunately, I think the school's been a driver and schools are a magnet. Wherever you put a school, there's gonna be houses and around them. Is, but to work with them on placement, so they aren't putting a school out in the middle of nowhere and then you have to, to deal with that. But also the existing people that live out there, and I don't know who the entity is, or at one time, the township was fairly organized up there. There should be some collaboration, granted, most of people are just, stay a heck of a way out here and leave us alone. But the reality is, they're gonna be encroached on at some point in their life. And, you know, how do you also collaborate with the existing people there? Cause I think as, as discussed, it probably makes most common sense to go, start at County Road Seventeen or whatever, in that area. So it's a contiguous build out from the city and right away, you're gonna be impacting a lot of people, cause most of the residential area is right along the river up there. That's something just to, and I, I don't know who, who you're talking, you don't wanna talk to every resident, I don't know if they have a representative. And a lot of it's, you know, gonna be just a matter of keeping them informed as the thought process, so that they at least have the opportunity to be engaged.
And that's where, like, the partnership with the County, I think, is very important, to kind of key into some of those opportunities for, for communication, so. Maybe just to kind of wrap this up, then the final, the second to last section there, just plan elements and topic areas. As you read this, or as you have time to read this in more detail, you'll see this, these are kind of, kind of different iterations of some common themes. And so hopefully you, you kind of see a lot of the themes that we talked about here tonight again. But collaboration being part of this in terms of the public input, coordination with other stakeholders, environmental scan or existing conditions and direction setting. Again, that's, goes back to the, you know, population projections, you know, what kind of input and expectations do we have going into this? What are the existing conditions that we're contending with, things like that? And then just, you know, a confirmation, you know, what we have in the West Fargo two point O plan, it's not a super old plan, but it's not brand new either. And so just reaffirming, you know, maybe some of the vision and goals of that plan. Certainly, you're not gonna get one hundred percent agreement on, on some of the, the vision. And, you know, we're gonna have challenges when it comes to things like density, when it comes to compatible land uses and things like that. But as best we can, you know, get some general community consensus through some of that public input as part of that. Just to kind of reaffirm, we're on the right track with the vision that we're laying out for the community. Assessment of future needs and public services and facilities. This is where, you know, there's gonna be, I think, an attempt to, as Jerry mentioned when he was here, you know, there are, you know, just some general high level conversations about future infrastructure servicing, things like that. As much as we can, kind of take those different conversations and tie them together to make sure that infrastructure decisions and transportation decisions are coordinated with, you know, future land use, coordinated with what other entities and jurisdictions are doing, coordinated with, you know, potential, you know, developers that may have options, you know, what are their intentions for the land? Things like that. You know, trails and park systems, to the point about, you know, preserving, you know, some of the, you know, public amenities for the future, you know, that should certainly be an aspect of this. And then fiscal and economic impacts of, of growth and sustainable, sustainability of development. Again, just understanding those fiscal impacts of growth under various scenarios, you know, so potentially looking at, you know, different scenarios of growth patterns and what that, what that does to the city's bottom line. Certainly, you know, the density component plays into having kind of that, that critical mass of density in order to pay for some of the infrastructure. These are all interrelated, you know, topics of conversation. Funding needs and sources, and then economic development opportunities and use of incentives. You know, that, you know, I'll point to the lagoons as a, you know, potential economic development opportunity, that the city owns a large swath of land there that's publicly owned. owned that, you know, could have some very unique, unique opportunities there. And then lastly, growth management, strategy and action steps. This speaks more towards, you know, hopefully some of the recommendations that would come out of this effort in terms of, you know, giving, giving us that, that framework. You know, one thing might be a future land use or typology map. And so again, pointing back to what we have in the comp plan currently, you know, if we can take this as a starting point, jumping off point and, and get something a little bit more fine grained, a little bit more detailed in terms of the on the ground, you know, existing conditions, the utility, the, the transportation plans that we have, kind of again, tying all those together in order to, to get some more high definition to, to something like this. It may or may not end up being kind of that more traditional land use map, it might be something in between, you know, that's something that we maybe have yet to, to kind of figure out. So I'll, I'll kind of stop there. The last section is just a, kind of the study here that we already talked about. So again, these are just kind of some initial discussions that, that kind of staff has put together as a, as a jumping off point for conversation. I don't want to keep you guys too long tonight, so.
I really appreciate your candor in identification of these issues because this is a lot of what I hear in the public. And so I, I think you nailed a lot of these here, that they are serious concerns.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Aaron, just maybe one other question regarding zoning. Is, are you, are you trying to think back to the needs assessment? Where is sort of modernizing the zoning code in your list of things to do? And does that fit in here or it's probably a separate?
Yeah. So the, the, there's two, I have it here, I can resend this out to you guys too if, can't remember how we communicated this out, I guess, it's been a while, but.
It's been a little while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a note to send that out to you guys.
That was in the first group.
What's that?
The re, the modernization or, that was in the first group or the.
Yeah, so there's, there's two recommendations or two, you know, projects that they identified relating to the, the zoning ordinance. The first is Title Four zoning text amendments, that was identified as a short-term project. And that was specific to kind of, you know, small, low hanging fruit, some, some, you know, kind of a Band-Aid, I guess, approach to, you know, tweaking the, the code where needed to, to address some of the current issues that we have identified. Within the midterm projects, they have a unified development code update. So that would be something potentially more comprehensive in nature. That would, you know, potentially be kind of overhauling the, the zoning ordinance in order to align it with things like the West Fargo two point O comp plan. And then, you know, potentially a growth area master plan or a downtown master plan. All those things would kind of inform something like that. The intention there would also be to not just look at the current subdivision and zoning regulations, but other, folding in other development regulations like, you know, stormwater, right-of-way regulations that are located in other ordinances, bring them all together into something that kind of reads well together. It's not as disjointed, makes, it's kind of more of a, kind of customer service to the development community if it's a kind of a one, one package ordinance.
And, and within that, you would also address the housing, middle housing, accessory dwelling units, all of those types of things.
Yeah, something with that comprehensive, the unified development code update, a component of that is typically to basically, you know, redo your, your zoning map, kind of reassess what the zoning districts are citywide, make any, you know, tweaks that, that make sense based on, you know, some of the plans and different policies that are in place at that time. That's typically a component of a, of that type of a zoning update. So with that, again, happy to stay here and chat with you guys as long as you want, but certainly don't want to keep you guys, so.
I think this is good.
Yeah, this is very good.
Last thing, I would just note really quickly is, I know we kind of threw a lot at you with the handouts and things, so please do send your comments to staff as you, as you have time to kind of digest some of the conversation tonight. Again, we want this to be kind of an ongoing conversation and we will have, we want to come on this as we, as we kind of reach out to other stakeholders and entities on this, so.
Do you, maybe one other quick question, and you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but where is the commission supportive of spending some money on planning like this?
We haven't had that conversation yet, but you know, that, like anything else, that's probably part of the conversation. Again, we're, we're kind of at the very early stages here, just recognizing the need and wanting to talk about the need and how we approach that need. And so we're open to any and all kind of ways to, ways to approach this as well, so.
All right, well, thank you. So the one topic that is not on the agenda is adjournment.
Let's do it anyway. Can I still motion? We're out?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move to adjourn.
We moved and seconded to adjourn? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Forgot to, so, point of reference, so now, because we did adjourn the meeting until after this discussion, this discussion is on follow-up record, though.
Yeah.
Which is good, but.
And that's maybe one thing.
It's a little meandering.
Yeah, was that your intention?
It'll be difficult for recording it.
So that's, that's one thing that I failed to, I guess, disclose to you guys earlier in the evening here. I think one, one thought is that going forward, you know, maybe, maybe we kind of adjourn the regular meeting and then we kind of go into this discussion-type meeting, kind of one of the, to kind of bring some, officially kind of bring an end to the formal part of the meeting.
Yes.
And then roll right into the informal portion. And then if there's an opportunity to maybe, you know, circle up some tables in this room or maybe we just walk down the hall to a conference room so that we can sit around the table.
You know, if.
It's a little more conducive to the conversation.
That'd be a, a good way to do it. I mean, maybe the, because the legal.
It would still be open to the public, we'd still, you know, notice for it. So if somebody wanted to sit in the, the back corner and, and listen in, they could do that, we just wouldn't be recording it live, you know, not live, but we would, wouldn't be recording it as all.
Let's do it that way. Let's adjourn.
If someone happened to stand on the spot, you know, we got great ideas, but we don't have all the ideas.
Yep.
The idea of a discussion.